Have Councilman Phil Clemmer, Councilman John Mahoney, Councilman Jay Thomason, Councilman Mac Blackstone, I suspect Councilwoman Dairy Berry and Councilman Cunningham will be joining us. If everyone's okay, I'll wait another minute to 6:05 and call it to order just to see if they're logging on.
I'll send Councilman Thomason to make texts, see what his status is.
Thomason is on, Jay's on.
Oh, Jay is on, okay.
Councilmember Dairy Berry's having a hard time, I'm gonna resend her. Alright, Councilmember Dairy Berry is getting in.
Would you mind texting Councilman Cunningham, but we may get rolling because we're five minutes past.
Yeah.
Ms. Dairy Berry, can you hear us at all?
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I don't know what's going on with my new laptop, I can't click in.
It's no problem, glad you got it worked out. We're gonna go ahead and get started, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's Thursday, May 14th, regular called council meeting for the city of Fountain Inn. Mr. Bell, if you would, mind introducing our pastor for today's invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a special guest giving our invocation. He's actually my pastor at New Spring Church, he's on the teaching team. New Spring Church is the largest church in South Carolina. Mr. King grew up right here in the Fountain Inn area and is a graduate of Hillcrest High School. And with that, I will let him lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, it's an honor to call on your name in a free country, that our ancestors shed their blood to secure for us. Thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy, and thank you for the ongoing work of this council as they seek wisdom to make the best decisions for the city of Fountain Inn. Lord, that's my hometown, my roots run deep there, so I do pray that you would give them a spirit of wisdom and discernment. I pray that they would find joy in their work, thank you for their service to the community. We pray all of this in the name of Jesus and for his sake, amen.
All right, we're gonna do a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag, United States of America.
To the republic.
To the republic which stands, one nation.
With liberty, justice. Pastor King got off, but thank you Pastor King for your invocation, we appreciate you coming back to your hometown virtually. Mr. Bell or Ms. Woods, is there anyone signed up for public forum today?
Madam Clerk told me that there was not.
Okay, alright, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and just for everyone's sake, we're gonna be doing just normal voice vote for consent agenda as well as adjournment and those types of housekeep, those types of things. For all other votes under new business, we're gonna be doing roll call, and I've asked our clerk to manage that roll call for us, so just a heads up when we get to that stuff. But the consent agenda is the regular council minutes from April 9th, the budget workshops on the 30th and May 7th, and the preliminary March financial report. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, any discussion? Hearing all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. City administrators report, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to start off talking about Fountain Inn's progress with Census 2020. As of May 12th, the national self-response rate was 59%, in South Carolina, the self-response rate was 53.8%. I'm happy to let everyone know that Fountain Inn's current self-response rate is 59.9%, which is above both the national and state. Unfortunately, we still are lagging behind Simpsonville and Malden, but we have shown great progress. Moving on to the Woodside Connector project, the city has received four alternates for us to review and decide. The city's amended tap grant award was for $351,480, with the city's 20% grant match being $87,870. Unfortunately, due to some unforeseen design changes and some astronomically high design and engineering fees from SC DOT, the cheapest alternate, which was alternate four, is going to require the city to contribute an additional $240,878. Alternate four requires obtaining some private right-of-way and and the about 80 feet of reduced width down to eight feet, as opposed to the rest of the length of that trail would be 11 feet in width. The current let date, though, of this project is set for February of 2022, so we definitely still have quite a bit of time and ways to fund that. With the Woodside Village Project, I'm happy to announce that our land conversion or land swap with the National Park Service has been finalized. The city is ready to proceed with issuing an RFP for the city-owned property. The adjacent property owner, Mr. Jane, we contacted him, and due to COVID-19, he is not interested in marketing or developing his property at this time. I imagine that that will change as our economy picks up, but at this time, the city is willing to proceed with the understanding that Mr. Jane's property could be developed as a face two. With our wayfinding signage project, we have been awaiting SC DOT encroachment permit approval for quite some time. We have received that this week, and so Signs Incorporated out of Charlotte will begin installation soon. And we are finalizing an RFP for the redesign of our city and natural gas websites, that should be posted soon. And Lauren, this week, staff submitted an application to the Lawrence County Capital Sales Tax Committee for road and traffic improvements to exit 22. That committee will sift through all of the submitted projects and rank them, and eventually that will be put to the voters of Lawrence County this November for them to decide whether or not they want to add that penny sales tax on in order to fund the list of projects. We are set to begin our farmer's market this Saturday, May 16th. For the farmer's markets, in May, we are going to do food and produce only, and we have a number of other guidelines and rules that will be enforced and publicized. And I think we are anticipating a lot of people wanting to get out and return to some normalcy. So we do anticipate a large crowd, but we have a lot of guidelines in place in order to keep them spaced apart. In the natural gas department, Fountain Inn Natural Gas had the lowest gas rates surveyed utilities in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia for April of 2020, this is the second month in a row. Last month, I mentioned that 15,000 calls were made for our annual phone safety survey. For an all-time high, we had just over 10% complete the survey, and the other results of the survey were very good. 86% said that Fountain Inn Natural Gas was their gas supplier. 94% were familiar with and know to call 811 before digging. 84% recognized the smell of natural gas, and 65% have reported receiving safety information in their natural gas bill. So those are all really good, really good signs. Also, the natural gas department recently had their office building parking lot field and striped. Mayor McClure asked Mr. Noriega and I today kind of what the status was for delinquent accounts, and as of today, we have about 550 accounts totaling just over $56,000 in fees and penalties. The governor issued some guidance to all utilities in the state today, saying that disconnections can resume, but emphasize that utilities need to try to work with their customers on payment plans and to do everything possible in order to avoid those disconnections. And so we, as the leaders of this community, have put some thought into how we're going to handle some of that. We're gonna be reaching out to the Center for Community Services and see what assistance they can offer. But we are, we're gonna move from there. Business is being conducted through the drive-through window, and they did not experience a revenue shortfall for the month of March and April. April results are still being compiled. In the police department, we are still fully staffed, everyone is certified, but we do have one officer that's completing her field training program. The 5K has been rescheduled for October 31st, and National Night Out has been scheduled for October 6th. Normally, that event is in August. If you've driven by recently, you'll notice that our roof replacement for the police department has begun. Chief Hamilton wanted me to let everybody know that there has been a rash of recent automobile break-ins in neighborhoods. It's actually been going on all over Greenville County. But the biggest part of that is that most of the affected vehicles were left unlocked. And so we really need to be vigilant about making sure when we go in at night that our vehicles are locked, because the majority of time, the bad guys are just going after those vehicles that are unlocked. And then also this week, they extradited the main suspect from the Lakeview Drive incident a few months ago from the state of Mississippi, he's being charged with arson and attempted murder. In our Parks and Recreation Department, all of our park facilities except the Activity Center are set to open back up this Monday, May 18th, and baseball and softball practices should begin shortly afterwards with games beginning May 26th and ending by July 2nd. Georgia Street Basketball Court has been resurfaced, that was paid for with one of our annual PAR grants. And then last week, our Parks and Rec staff went out to the city of Pickens and helped their recreation department get their fields in plain shape after the flooding and tornado damage that they recently suffered. Panagakis Asphalt Pavilion completed two of the four sides of our municipal court building parking lot this week, and they will be scheduling the remaining two sides soon. In our Public Works Department, we still have one vacant CDL driver position and one vacant crew worker position, but an offer has been extended to an individual for that crew worker position. Hopefully, we can get that person started very soon. And per a discussion with Mayor McClure, I've been in contact with some engineering firms to receive pricing for a study examining the city's worst or reoccurring stormwater issues. Over in the fire department, our one firefighter has returned from paternity leave, but another will be going on paternity leave shortly. This past month, several of our firefighters have assisted with tornado search and rescue in Seneca and Pickens County. And then a really bit of good news is that our C-Shift responded to a cardiac arrest call back in April to an unresponsive patient. After they performed CPR, the patient was revived, and after a little bit of time in the hospital, the patient is now at home doing well. So our fire department really does save lives. And also wanted to let, remind everyone that the Taste in Event put on by our Chamber of Commerce is scheduled for May 21st, that is a week from today.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Bell?
Yes. Mr. Bell, is there a projected opening date for the Activity Center? Have y'all talked about any potential dates for it? Man, I miss going down there.
Not at this time. We thought it was going to be today, but now it's looking like tomorrow. The governor is supposed to make a few more announcements at one of his press conferences, and I believe he is going to be addressing things like festivals and a few of the remaining items that have been closed. And I'm hoping to maybe get some guidance from him tomorrow on when we can set a date for opening up the Activity Center. As of right now, we are planning on opening up our city facilities like City Hall and the natural gas building office open back up to the public on June 1st.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, not seeing any. Move on to, there's no unfinished business, so first item is 8A, first reading of 2020 dash year 02, the 2019-2020 Budget Amendment. Mr. Bell and Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to update and amend our fiscal year 2020 budget for the city of Fountain Inn to account for appropriations made by city council through the year, or through the fiscal year, rather. At one of our previous budget workshops, I presented this information to you all. But basically, when a municipality adopts its annual budget ordinance, staff and elected officials are projecting receipts and expenditures of government during the year. Extenuating circumstances often make it appropriate to adopt an ordinance to reflect deviations in certain line items, and we have some increases in revenue that we need to account for. There's been a lot of unprecedented residential growth, which affected our fire service area revenue lines, our Lawrence County taxes lines, our Greenville County taxes lines, and our variance in rezoning fees. Those were all unbudgeted, and that led to an increase of $290,500 in additional revenue. And we are using $115,400 from fund balance for a total revenue increase to this year's budget of $405,900. On the expenditure side, some line items were underbudgeted such as payroll, consultant fees, police and fire education incentive pay, special events marketing, and internet expenditures. In addition, a website audit was performed, which has helped us put together our RFP that we will be going out for shortly. And then the big-ticket item for this year were the 800 radios which were purchased, and these additional expenditures totaled $405,900. And so the budget is still balanced, and I would recommend council approve this budget amendment ordinance.
Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment?
移到
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, any discussion or comments, questions? Not hearing any, we kind of reviewed this in the last budget workshop, I believe, too, so, alright. Ms. Woods, if you would mind doing a roll call vote? May need to unmute her, Sean.
I think I got it.
There you go.
Okay, Councilmember Mahoney?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomason?
Aye.
Councilmember Dairy Berry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clemmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Absent.
Councilmember Blackstone?
Aye.
And Mayor McClure?
Aye. Thank you, it passes a 6-0. I'll move on to next item, first reading, Annexation 2020 dash 004 Jenkins Bridge Road zoning to R12 and assigning to Council Ward 5. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor, sorry, I was just promoting Greg Gordo's over as a panelist in case we have any questions for him. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of approximately 122.85 acres on Jenkins Bridge Road into the city limits of Fountain Inn, and it would zone it to R12 Residential District and assign the parcel to Council Ward 5. The Planning Commission voted unanimously 5 to 0 in favor of this annexation and zoning at our May 4th virtual Planning Commission meeting. Blue Water Civil Design presented on behalf of the applicant, Mark Three Properties, who is a residential developer. No one provided written public comment regarding the application. That public meeting was held virtually via Zoom. The parcel is currently unzoned in unincorporated Greenville County. Our future land use map calls for medium to low-density residential, which is R12 or R15. Couple other notes here, this is pretty much the very most west of our existing city limits along 418. The access is currently being provided off Jenkins Bridge Road, which is Greenville County-maintained. Unzoned property in unincorporated Greenville County allows all types of land uses, residential, commercial, or industrial. The closest and adjacent city of Fountain Inn parcel is C2, which faces Tall Pines Road, but it currently is used as a single-family home. This parcel is solidly within the Fountain Inn Fire District. In fact, Fire Department, Fire Station 2 is located on Jenkins Bridge Road. The other main item for discussion, I think for tonight, is the fact that this area of south of 385 is, has been primed for residential growth. Rewa has a regional pump station planned along what they call the Payne Branch Sewer Basin, which is adjacent to this parcel. The plan is for Rewa to put this regional pump station in and open up sewer for all of the major parcels in this area, basically from Wilson Bridge Road, where we recently annexed, all the way down to 418. There are other sewer providers in the area that would love to be the sewer provider, such as Metro Connects, but if any parcels in this area that are annexed into the city limits would be sewer customers of the city of Fountain Inn. The plan would be after the, or concurrent with the installation of the Rewa Regional Pump Station for the city of Fountain Inn to install a gravity sewer main that would go up that creek and allow for sewer in all of those developable parcels. Controlling the sewer in this area is definitely dependent on this annexation being approved and added to the city limits. Failure to annex this parcel and some of these others in that area would allow another sewer provider to control that basin.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve on first reading Annexation 2020 dash 004 Jenkins Bridge Road?
So moved.
Thank you, didn't see who that was. Mr. Thomason?
Yes.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Questions, comments, and discussion? I had, I had one, Mr. Bell. My major concern with this one is the condition of Jenkins Bridge Road. I think that's mentioned in the staff report, and I listened to the Planning Commission meeting that day, and it was a concern, I think, of staff and also the Planning Commission. Can you talk about the process behind that, because that road, part of it, I believe, is even without lines. So can you talk about the process for this annexation and how that fits in?
Sure, and I will also unmute Mr. Gordo's to jump in. A traffic stud, traffic impact study was performed for this parcel. The only thing that they, that that study made in terms of recommendations were turn lanes on 418, but they were not really taking into account the condition of the road, they were taking into account traffic. And so the additional traffic would warrant the turn lanes, but definitely Greenville County is gonna have some say at the subdivision advisory committee process as to what sort of improvements are going to be, are gonna be needed onto Jenkins Bridge Road for this parcel. And those recommendations from the subdivision advisory committee will go back to the Planning Commission for approval.
Thank you. I also wanted to say that for council members that, especially if this is approved on second reading, but even between first and second reading, I intend on reaching out to county council and if, and if possible, some of the, some of the staff at Greenville County to express concern over Jenkins Bridge Road. So just so people know, that's something that's on my radar, that I intend to send them a letter telling them that we really would like to see improvements on that road if they're gonna, if development is gonna occur in this area, so. Any other questions or comments? Seeing.
If we're bringing this into the city with a road not be ours to take care of?
I don't believe so, remains it's a county road, correct, Sean?
Correct. I'm not entirely sure how that works. I know there are instances in our city limits where we have county roads, such as Valley View is one that is county-owned and maintained, but still in our city limits. So that's, I think, still unclear at this time. Mr. Gordo's?
If I, if I can, the county's normal policy is this, if the city only annexes on one side of the road, then it's still a county road. Once the city begins to annex property on both sides, then they claim that the city takes over ownership of the road. So this annexation looks like it's only gonna be annexing on one side of the road, so the road will continue to be in the county's system, and they'll be responsible for maintenance of it.
Greg, do you have anything to add to that?
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me on. That statement's accurate. This piece of property is only adjacent to a potential city of Fountain Inn property on one side. That's the southern portion. Normally, when you annex roadway or annex land adjacent to a roadway, you only annex up to the center line. So at best, we would only have ownership or annexation property to the center of that roadway. I have already contacted Kurt Walters and other members of Greenville County Engineering regarding this railway, their plans for improvement, or if any improvements could be made. It's more than likely that the developer would actually be the one who would need to make the physical improvements to this road, and that would be on the side that we would be annexing. They would need to widen that.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else?
Mayor, looking at that rendering on the map, top right-hand corner, looks like there's a little cutout. It's odd-looking. What's going on with that? What is that?
Can you see my pointer?
Yep.
Is that what you're?
Oh, come down to the right, right there. What is all that about?
That is not part of this this project.
I understand that.
Looks like a home that this is just kind of being cut out of.
Administrator Bell, that's that portion of land. That's a cellphone communication tower. So that is their access road and access to that cellphone tower. If any development were to occur, it would be built around it.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you, Sean. Anyone else? Not seeing or hearing any. I guess I'll go ahead.
What is that part that you were zooming in?
That is what I thought Mr. Mahoney was talking about is is a house that is not part of this project.
Okay.
All right. Not seeing or hearing any other comments? All right, Ms. Woods, I'll go ahead and call for the roll call vote for the approval of the annexation twenty twenty dash zero zero four on first reading.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomason. Councilmember Dairy Berry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clemmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Blackstone.
Aye.
Mayor McClear.
Aye. All right. Motion passes six oh on first reading. Move on to the next item, which is E dash twenty twenty dash zero zero three, an emergency ordinance. Mr. Bell or Mr. Holmes, whoever wants to take?
I'm gonna let Mr. Holmes take this one.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have in front of you ordinance number E twenty twenty dash zero zero three. You all passed an ordinance declaring a state of emergency, and that ordinance provided that you could meet electronically like we're meeting now. And that ordinance was automatically ends on the sixty-first day after it passed, so it ends on May twenty-two. What you have in front of you is another ordinance that simply continues to declare the state of emergency. You may know the government master just today issued another order continuing the state of emergency. That will continue for at least fifteen days. So this ordinance just continues the practice that you have been under since the original ordinance was passed back in March. I want to emphasize, particularly for members of the public that may be listening, this ordinance doesn't shut any businesses down. It doesn't have anything to do with anything other than city operations. And different than the first ordinance, it provides that it ends no later than the sixty-first day after it's passed. But council can certainly end it earlier as the ordinance provides. And if the governor were to declare the crisis over, then this ordinance would automatically end.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Any, let's get a motion on the table, a motion to approve E dash twenty twenty zero zero three. Is there a motion?
Removed.
I heard Mr. Mahoney first. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Clemmer. Thank you. Any comments or discussion?
I just wanted to say, one of the things I had emailed Mr. Holmes about was making sure that that language was still maybe conducted by electronic means. I think we've discussed as a council the intention of getting back in person in June. But in case things did not, you know, in case things spike or something happens, then we're, this at least gives us that clearance. But this is, Mr. Holmes is right, this does not restrict us to only doing virtual. We have that. We have the option of kind of running as normal if we so wish.
That is correct.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or other comments? Seeing none. All right, Ms. Woods? Hope you're muted, Ms. Woods.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomason. Councilmember Dairy Berry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clemmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Blackstone.
Aye.
And Mayor McClear.
Aye. All right. Motion passes six zero. Next up is item D, Resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero five, abandoned building on Howard Creek Drive. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution certifying property located at four Howard Creek Drive as an abandoned building site pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act. The property is located at four Howard Creek Drive, and it has been purchased by a resident of Fountain Inn with the intention of opening a business called Village Play. The last occupant of this building was Premier Video, which closed on May twenty-first, twenty twelve. The new property owner is seeking to receive the South Carolina State Abandoned Building Tax Credit. The South Carolina State Abandoned Building Tax Credit is available as an economic development incentive for rehabilitation of abandoned buildings and the surrounding site. The incentive provides either an income tax credit or property tax credit for the renovation, redevelopment, or improvement of abandoned building sites operated for income-producing properties. The site must be at least sixty-six percent abandoned. And the space has been closed continuously to business or otherwise non-operational for income-producing purposes for at least five years. When located in a municipality of one thousand to twenty-five thousand people, the property owner must spend at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars renovating the building to be eligible. And the governing body must certify that the site has been abandoned, and and that's what we're doing here today. Village Play is slated to be an indoor play space for young children designed with adults in mind. They will serve coffee and coffee-based drinks for caregivers to enjoy while watching their children play in a clean, safe space. The play space will focus on imaginative play and will offer birthday parties, special events, and classes for children in the community. This has no financial impact on the municipality. This is, the property owner is seeking the income tax credit from the state of South Carolina. So all city councils being asked to do is to approve this resolution stating that this building has been abandoned for at least five years.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero five certifying the property at four Howard Creek Drive as abandoned?
Removed.
Thank you, Ms. Dairy Berry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Any discussion or comments?
So the current zoning is going to be okay with whatever is planned to go in there?
It is. I believe it's actually zoned S one, but yes, that is allowed.
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none. All right. Ms. Woods, it's a roll call to approve Resolution twenty twenty zero zero five.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomason. Councilmember Dairy Berry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clemmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Blackstone.
Aye.
And Mayor McClear.
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Next up, item E, Approval of Revisions to Multiple Gas Office Policies. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Every six months or so, our Natural Gas Director, Eduardo Noriega, and his staff have been reviewing all of their various gas office policies. They have a few revisions to make here and add a new policy. Some of the revisions include on policy one oh nine, instead of the temperature simply being at thirty-two degrees Fahrenheit or below for not disconnecting customers for non-payment, this would be switched to the forecasted temperature for disconnection of non-payment must remain above thirty-two degrees for forty-eight hours following the scheduled disconnection. For policy one thirteen, customers refusing to provide their social security number to for us to run their credit history will be charged automatically a two-hundred-dollar deposit fee, and that would only be refunded for accounts closed in good standing. And then any builder requesting a new meter set and fails our inspection will be charged the standard service call fee of thirty-five dollars for a repeat visit. Policy one twenty-one, if a customer doesn't honor a payment arrangement which was set up in order to avoid disconnection, customer will be charged our standard eighty-five-dollar delinquent fee. Policy one twenty-eight, a thirty-five-dollar fee applies during normal business hours when a service technician is sent to a customer's home for a routine meter or facility inspection or any non-emergency call after hours. That fee, they would, those service calls would be subject to a seventy-dollar fee, and Fountain Natural Gas will perform all non-emergency service requests the following business day. And then finally, a new policy one oh four involving the city of Fountain Inn elected officials and employees. This is simply stating that they will not be given special treatment regarding paying our gas bills for new accounts. The fifty-dollar non-refundable application fee still applies, but all deposits would be waived. And the purchase price for gas appliances such as grills, logs, tankless water heaters will be sold at cost, and no markups will apply.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the revisions to the gas office policies as presented?
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Any discussion or questions? Not seeing or hearing any. Ms. Woods, for approval of the revisions to gas office policies?
Councilmember Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomason. Councilmember Dairy Berry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clemmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Blackstone.
Aye.
And Mayor McClear.
Aye. Motion passes six oh. Next up is item F, Approval of Sidewalk Art at Commerce Park. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Council tonight is being asked to approve the installation of some interactive sidewalk art over at Commerce Park. Our special events staff members, Ellen Lane and Heather Cannon, are continually seeking to approve the the activities that go on at our farmer's market, along with the concerts and other festivals and things that we have there in Commerce Park. These interactive arts, such as hopscotch and checkers and darts and and things of that nature, would all be painted on the sidewalk right there at Commerce Park near the farmer's market pavilion by a local artist. And we do have the money in our in our current budget. The the estimated cost for for having these painted is is eight hundred to a thousand dollars.
I have a question.
Thank you. Do you want to get it on the table first, Mr. Mayor? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thanks, Mr. Dairy Berry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Go ahead, Mr. Dairy. Sorry.
I was wondering, are these renderings of what would be put down?
Yes. So staff found some examples of other communities' kind of interactive art and and gave them to a local artist to kind of give us a mock-up rendering of of what what they could look like. They're not completely married to to any of these, but more or less the concept.
I would love to see a sensory path included in these drawings. As far as, those are pretty big. They have them in schools and stuff for, you know, you hop five times and then you do a little figure eight kind of thing. I think that would be awesome to add with this.
Definitely, definitely. We will. We will include that. And I would say one of the 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 main things for this is that, you know, it's semi-permanent. This is not something that's going to last twenty years. So, you know, if we put something down, it ends up, you know, not being to our satisfaction. We can definitely redo it or or do something different.
How's that removed, Mr. Bell? Is that pressure washed off, or do you know?
I I believe so.
Okay.
I would say time, weather, and pressure washing.
Exactly.
Tell me again why we're doing this?
So take our Sounds of Summer concert series, Friday Night Concert Series, for instance. I know this past past summer, we brought a lot of interactive activities for the for the children that were there, such as gigantic Connect Four, gigantic Jenga, and other things like that. And this is just to enhance those types of activities.
So actually, children or adults are going to be game-playing here? Is that what we're talking about, the renderings?
Yes, sir. I don't envision there being a ton of people using using this when there are not events. Things like the Friday Night Concert Series, the Saturday Morning Farmer's Market, the Fourth of July Celebration. Prior to COVID, you know, most of all of our events, special events throughout the year, were extremely family-friendly, and this was just something to enhance that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none. Ms. Woods, for the approval of the sidewalk art at Commerce Park, I think with some some input, but the concept, I think.
You ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomason. Councilmember Dairy Berry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clemmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Blackstone.
Aye.
And Mayor McClear.
Aye. All right. Next up is item G, Approval of Administrative Evaluation Process and Appointment of Committee. I'll take this. Included in your packets is a memo for about the city administrator's performance review and contract renewal. This is simply laying out a process. And as I want to be sure that this is a part of a council action, I wanted to put this before everybody to get council's approval. It includes the formation of a three-person committee consisting of myself, Mayor Pro Tim, Phil Clemmer, and Councilman John Mahoney to be the evaluation committee. The way this would work, well, A, I wanted council to have buy-in in all of this, but also I wanted to have sort of a more codified process for this so that council members, staff, as well as the public understands how we do this. And so tonight, we're just talking about the process, and I'm asking for approval of the process and appointment of the committee by council. We're not discussing any sort of performance or personnel at this time. You guys have in front of you, a quick synopsis is that we will, we will conduct our own personal evaluations through evaluation forms, which I will email you after this. They are also in your box, hard copies are in your box. Those will be returned to the members of the committee. The committee will meet and and compile a summary. And then that summary will be the source for discussion during executive sessions starting in the June council meeting. That's my intent on the process. The exact dates may may have to change a little bit depending on our council meeting schedules, but that's that is my intent. So you have the, that's it in summary. And so I would ask for a motion to approve the process and appoint the committee for the administrator evaluation.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Dairy Berry. And just so counsel, as I have talked to to Mr. Clemmer and Mr. Mahoney, and they've agreed to to serve on this. I'm not springing this on them. Any questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. Ms. Woods, if you want to do roll call for the approval of the evaluation process and appointment of the committee?
Councilmember Mahoney.
One second.
All right.
One second, Ms. Woods. Sorry. I just want to make it clear to members of the public and council. When this committee meets, it technically is a public meeting. It will be advertised. That committee will will go into executive session to do its work. work and then come out of executive session. So this committee is a formal committee of council technically, so it will, it will act as such. So just want to make sure the public understood that. Sorry, Ms. Woods and Mr. Mahoney.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Councilmember Mahoney?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomason?
Aye.
Councilmember Dairy Berry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clemmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Blackstone?
Aye.
Mayor McClear?
Aye.
Okay, we're through with new business. We're now, we need to enter to an executive session for the discussion of appointment of a human resource manager as well. Mr. Bell, I don't have the updated agenda on me. Do you want to, can you do the, I know there's a second item?
Yes, sir. And the other item would be for a development agreement concerning property located at Greenville County Tax Map Number 0562010100302.
Before we get into the motions, Mr. Bell, can you explain how this is going to work with the technology for everybody?
I am, I believe that I have promoted one of the attendees to, as a panelist. If not, I will, I will contact that individual. But yeah, I will remove, we only have two attendees viewing this virtual meeting at the moment, one is, is a staff member. And so when we go into executive session, I will stop recording and I will also stop live streaming to, to Facebook for us to conduct our executive session meeting. And then when we resume, I will begin recording and we can livestream again.
Okay, does that make sense to everybody?
So we don't need to re-sign back in, we just stay where we are?
I believe so, that the plan is to, is to stay in.
Okay.
All right, so is there a motion into executive session for the discussion of appointment of human resource manager as well as, Mr. Bell, you got to read it one more time? Sorry.
For the development agreement concerning property located at Greenville County Tax Map Number 0562010100302.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dairy Berry. All those in favor of going, well, I guess I'll do a roll call to go into executive session, Ms. Woods?
Councilmember Mahoney?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomason?
Aye.
Councilmember Dairy Berry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clemmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Blackstone?
Aye.
Mayor McClear?
Aye.
All right, so we will stop live streaming and we will rebroadcast once we come out of executive session. We'll wait for Mr. Bell to give us the word.
Okay. We are recording and we are streaming and I've unmuted Madam Clark.
Right, all right, can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dairy Berry, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of coming out of executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, we are now in regular session. We have one item to vote on and it is to?
Mr. Mayor, if you could just report that there were no votes or action taken in executive session.
Thank you, there were no votes or action taken in the executive session, can report that. We do have one item to vote on in regular session and it is to appoint Rebecca Maha-Ward as Human Resources Manager for the City of Fountain Inn. Mr. Bell, is there any other comments you need to make on that?
I don't think so.
When would her start date be?
She's actually going to be here this weekend to look for places to live. If that goes smoothly and she can sell her current house, then, you know, hopefully sometime in June, but we have a tentative start date of July 1. We hope that she can start much sooner.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Another question please, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do, do we have some guidance in regards to any relocation package or so forth? Is that nailed down at this point?
Yes, sir. She has accepted a, an offer letter with, with her salary and a relocation package.
Okay, thank you.
Right, right. Is there a motion to appoint Rebecca Maha-Ward to Human Resources Manager for the City of Fountain Inn?
An enthusiastic motion from Mr. Clemmer.
Noted, thank you, Mr. Clemmer, is there a second?
Second.
Second, I heard, Mr. Thomason. Any discussion or other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Ms. Woods, are you on and ready?
Yes, sir.
If you want to do roll call for approval?
Sure. Councilmember Mahoney?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomason?
Aye.
Councilmember Dairy Berry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clemmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Blackstone?
Aye.
Mayor McClear?
Aye.
Motion passes six oh. We look forward to having Ms. Maha-Ward here, hopefully in June, at least in July. No other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mahoney. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.